Good afternoon.
We're just making.
Story County Supervisors.
Brenda.
We're just getting our technology set. Got it? All right, it is, actually it's Wednesday, not Tuesday, August 4th, correct? So our agenda says Tuesday, I'm like, don't mess me up here. That's all right. It is Wednesday, August 4th, 2:00 PM, and this is the work session of the Board of Supervisors regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. And again, doing kind of updates from our previous meeting as we are trying to garner information in regards to the utilization of the dollars that will be coming into the county. I don't know if Supervisor Basil, if you have any updates you want to give at this particular time? Not sure if Supervisor Merkin will be joining today, she was not feeling well. And so she may not be zooming, may not be zooming in.
The only update I have right now is we have over 400 responses to the survey so far, so. So that's good.
Great. Have any of the agencies started applying for those funds that we? They have already?
Yes, yeah, Good Neighbor and Good Neighbor did right away. And I heard from Jody yesterday that she had completed the paperwork and was submitting it.
Okay, great, great, great. Glad to see that that's up and start or started and the process is starting there.
Yeah, we might have to redo the MOU and the application just to, because of the extension of the eviction moratorium to October 3rd, our paperwork said July 31st was the expiration date. So I talked to Ethan and he said, yeah, we might just want to remove the date itself from the paperwork and have everyone re-sign the MOU if they apply again.
Great, and I see Linda's just getting ready to join. Good afternoon, Linda. So we've just started the meeting and Supervisor Basil was just giving us just a brief update on the housing funds. We've got some agencies that have already completed the application for funds. I didn't know if you had any updates at this particular time as well?
I just have one question for everybody that is something I think we need to deal with today. Some of the recent, the recent FAQ document from Treasury plus a recent webinar, instead of seeing them dates that is, we have to have funds committed as of December 2022 and spent December 2024, I'm seeing committed as December 2024 and spent by the 20, by 26. Have either of you seen that?
What page are you looking at?
I'm sorry, actually, I can't tell you what page it was on because the document's on my desk and I'm at home.
I thought that that was way ahead of it.
That FAQ that Treasury put out was it July 17th? The most recent one? And then I was also on a webinar yesterday. It was either an infrastructure webinar I was on earlier this week or the broadband one I was on yesterday. And I saw the same dates. And when I was up in Story City the other day, the city administrator asked me, he said he had seen the 24 and 26 dates as well. Maybe it's a question Supervisor heads, maybe it's a question you could ask the ISAC folks? Maybe they know. And I can, tomorrow I can find it, when I'm in the office, I know I can find it. But I just, I didn't bring the document home because I thought I'd be in the office today.
Yeah, because the information I initially had and then from the PowerPoint that they did was that we had to have the dollars committed by December, excuse me, end of December of 2022, obligated by 2022 and extended by 2024. That's why we were talking about that such a short time to.
And I'm starting to wonder if maybe that they've made an extension on the infrastructure because they realized that the infrastructure funds will just take longer. Because the last two webinars I was on, when I saw these new dates pop up, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, were, one was about infrastructure in general and the other one was about broadband. So, yeah, I know, because I saw the 22 and the 24 dates and that's what I've been quoting all along and all of a sudden something different popped up, speaking of popping up.
I can certainly ask ISAC, we also have another meeting next week. We didn't have one this week, so we have another meeting next, next week, so we can find out from them as well. So I'll email it to them ahead of time because I'm sure everybody is going to want that application.
For sure, for sure, thank you.
Certainly do that.
The only other question I had was with CDC's new, how does the CDC, the new CDC eviction moratorium, did you see that this morning or yesterday? How is that going to affect where we are with our program, do you think?
I don't, I don't think it's going to have any negative effect on our program. I think those folks who were on the edge of eviction a few days ago are still in the same situation they are financially as far as being on top of their rent. Maybe this might even be better for some of them. You know, if they're able to get some money to their landlord, maybe, maybe they can work something out moving forward. I don't, I don't know. Hopefully it'll give some folks some flexibility. Well, I'm also going to interject that, I'm going to assume that if there were folks who were going to be evicted by the end, by the end of July, and this is August 4th, that may have already occurred.
Yeah, right.
So folks that, that may not have yet, but there's probably a group of folks that it did already occur to because they were planning, the plan was to be the end of July.
Right.
And I'm sure that this will caught landlords by surprise, so it might take time working with landlords to undo what was done, in which case having $2,000, up to $2,000 there, the equivalent of 30 days, that might get people the breathing time before landlords say, oh, I guess this, I need to let you back or something like that. And who knows if that same place would still be there anyway.
Right, and I did talk to the clerk of court this morning, actually. And they, they only have three evictions on their docket for the next two weeks. So it doesn't sound like evictions are, are as big a problem. What I, what I am guessing it is, is people's leases are not being renewed, is more likely. If, if we are in a situation where we have a lot of people who are struggling, and I don't have any information back from our providers yet, or is what they've seen. But if they are seeing a rush, it is probably more that people's leases are not being renewed.
Which is kind of a way around eviction.
Yeah, exactly. Right. A lot less.
Yeah, good. Okay, that's, those are the only two things I had in my, on my mind today, so thank you for letting me go ahead and bring those up.
June 2021 Department of Treasury Compliance and Reporting Guide, and it says eligible costs incurred between March 3rd of 21 and December of 24, and funds obligated in '24 have to be obligated by the end of '24 and extended by '26. So I don't know if you were hearing an extension on the infrastructure that has not passed or if you were intermixing the two, because the original guidelines for this one has been, from what I recall, '24 and '26.
For the infrastructure part.
For, for this, for the coronavirus, 18.9 million period.
I'd have to look back at some of our presentations because I'm sure it was '22 and '24, but I am seeing under 6.13 on the FAQs. It says all funds obligated within the statutory period between March 3rd, 2021, and December 31st, 2024, and expended to cover such obligations by December of 2026.
I think it was 2022 and '24 and some previous documents. And I have no idea why it's changed, but, well, that, that, you know, that you can find that, seems to say that it is, but.
Yeah, I saw, I, yeah, I did find what you were looking for, so.
Thank you.
So the other thing I wanted, or the other thing that I wanted to bring up then, so one of the things, as you know, as I've been reaching out to the various communities and trying to identify what some of their needs are. And for a number of them, they have not, or at least when I first started this, hadn't kind of discussed it, hadn't thought about it, or some of them were starting to generate some ideas, but weren't even sure if they'd meet in the criteria. So it's still early in the phase. Some of the things that they were talking about that relate to water, sewer, whatever, are quite costly. And for some of these communities, the amount of funds that they're going to receiving is not going to cover the cost or will make a very minimal dent in help covering the cost. So on our last ISAC work session that Lisa Markley and I served on, one of the other participants on that group from Dubuque County talked about how they have set up to a survey similar to like what we have to get information from the community on utilization of those dollars. But then they were also looking at doing, or they were doing an application process for folks to apply for dollars through the county. Now, they were opening it up to cities, businesses, nonprofits, so pretty, pretty broad. So what I'm just bringing right now is just for you to kind of take a look at. I want to, I want to review a little bit more, because we have talked about some of the areas within our own, kind of internally, that we've kind of said, okay, we don't think we want to fund these particular areas, or trying to figure that, that out. So I want to kind of go through this a little bit more. Leann and I have been looking at some other states and getting some additional, some other additional information, what other folks are doing, but this is, I want you to know, this was something that I was looking at it doing. I also am not sure, I've got an email to Dubuque, I wasn't sure if they were setting aside a specific amount of dollars or if they were just saying, hey, you could apply in, but you need to meet, or then, then the supervisors would review, you know, does this meet the criteria to be extended and then doing the contractor, however they're allocating those funds? So I'm, I'm still getting some information now, that's why I'm saying is, I mainly wanted you to see what I was working on, but once I get that additional information, we'll bring it back for more discussion next week on it. I did talk with Brenda Dryer, and she's online here about doing something like this, thinking that this would be a great idea to do, one, you can see what all the needs are for the communities and kind of the cause. One thing that Leann and I talked about as well is if we set something up like this, was we'd want to make sure that the cities did apply for the state funds, because we don't want to, it's kind of, well, gosh, the county's going to give us money, so I don't want to go through the process of going to the state. It's like, no, we have to go through the state funds. Brenda then brought up about the CDVG dollars. And I had mentioned to her that, well, gosh, we were just at the Story County Economic Development Meeting and it came across that these cities wouldn't be able to access those funds because they didn't meet the income thresholds. And Brenda was like, whoa, wait a minute, I should have been up at that meeting. Going on? So that's where I asked Brenda to provide us some information as well, wanted to help provide some additional information to local communities, but how that might factor in if we want to do, you know, something like this for other, other community, other communities. I should say, along with the, kind of the draft, the plan or draft kind of application that we're just kind of still working through, was also doing a application for internally, for, for projects within, within our county, Story County. One was just thought it might be an easier tracking system. And two, I mean, right now, we're just kind of going through and looking at what we think falls under the CIP plan, thinking other departments they could apply for, and then we could determine if it meets that criteria or not. So those are just a couple areas. But do either Supervisors have any questions? For me, I know I've just been a high level touch on this, but I thought you would be interested in the information Brenda was going to say about the CDVG, because that would probably play into how other cities could apply the funds. But if we did something like this, what are the criteria we might want to have in place for those other communities?
I would just, go ahead. If I were just to question on the external, I, I think we've had discussion, we haven't really voted on it or anything, but I think our discussion was, we weren't really looking at the premium pay issue. Would we, would we, and I see you've kind of got in your, you've got everything in there. And I don't know that, I don't know whether we'd want to include that. And particularly in our internal applications, would we, would, are there some things that we want to exclude or some things we want to emphasize?
That's absolutely right, Linda. And that was the thing, we just, I just took off Leann and I just took off what, what Dubuque did for right now. That's what I'm saying is, I want to bring it back because I know we're going to want to narrow it down to say, okay, we might do the whole thing that are eligible, but as the county, this is what we're willing to say you could apply and have funds go towards. So, so yes, there needs to be further discussion on that and very well recognize what we've decided we didn't want to do within the county for ourselves, or something we're not going to want to do for everyone else as well. So yes, I'm, recognize your, your comment, yeah.
The idea of inviting suggestions or applications. I do like this idea because it's, it's one thing to gather information about what people are struggling with and, you know, what the existing needs are. But then it, it's a lot of work to try to problem solve some of those things. So if people are coming to us with ideas or with answers and they've gone through all of this, this process, those, those should be well thought out, formulated ideas and suggestions or programs. I, I, yeah, I like the idea, yeah.
So I, so I know, I recognize it is a work in progress still. So as I said, I will bring this back as we're still doing it, but I just want you to be aware, this is our starting point at it, as we will think back and then further flesh out, how do we narrow it down even further?
And I think you're right, I think this, this will provide an easier tracking, an easier way to compare apples to apples, really. Yeah. Nice job.
Thank you. So with that, Brenda, do you want to talk a little bit about the CDVG since there seemed to be some confusion, at least I.
So let me just open with, with a few comments. So I think you all know, I've been at this a very long time, 25 years or more, and never in my lifetime have I had more confusion and more mixed messages than we have right now. Case in point, the shifting of dates. And be grateful that you have a, an organization that's providing you good information. I, I don't think our communities are getting the level of questions answered that you as the county is. So I'm grateful for that because every time I talk to one of you, I glean information that I think is important to our, our communities. And so I'll, I'll talk about what I know about the, the CDVG because we are talking to some of our communities about that opportunity. But there's also some funding becoming available through EDA. And Leann and I are both scheduled to do a follow-up conversation with the MPO out of Des Moines that's promised us that it's going to be so much easier for us to understand after, after a Zoom call tomorrow. So you've got that amount of funding looming, you've got potential CDVG, you have their own state funding, we have a potential partner program with the county, and we don't even have an infrastructure bill passed yet in the federal government. So I think some way, shape or form, and Leann and I are going to talk about this tomorrow, is how do we put the information in a format, and even if it's almost like a decision tree for our communities? And it starts with have you, have you secured your, the state funding? And being very clear about what that deadline is, there's even been confusion about that. So, and then we, we almost work it through so that we can say, okay, here's a project, here's your money, here's an option to fill the gap and make it really easy. So number one, our clerks understand, and then they can convey to, to their elected officials all of the tools that are available to us. And I feel like if we, if we do that for our communities, we're, we're going to be doing so much better than other places that are just hoping that all of these messages are getting out in such a way that, that somebody might use the funds. So while they seem like a lot of money, I think the, the communities that kind of have their act together, know when they can pair programs, when they can't, are the ones that are, that are going to have strong applications. So I want to talk a little bit about the, the special round of CDVG. So CDVG has been around forever. I think you all know Ames is an entitlement community, so they take a direct allocation. And so they're not eligible for the CDVG programs that we work with on the state side of things. What's unique about this special round that we have right now, and in all reality, there may be future, future rounds if an infrastructure bill passes, there isn't a required match. And so this is where I feel like we're, we're not doing a job to our communities if we don't position this opportunity, because normally there's very much prescribed matches. Well, that isn't the case because as we know, they want to get the money spent, they want it out the door, they want it doing, wanting it doing good things. So, you know, there are, are six or seven targeted activities. And depending on which of those activities is how the low to moderate income is looked at. So if a, if a community wanted to set up a micro enterprise grant fund or forgivable loan fund to support the development of small businesses and the retention of businesses in their community, then they track the incomes of the people applying for the jobs. If they were looking at a facade grant that could make meaningful impact, they, they have to look at blight, it has nothing to do with, with low to moderate income. If I'm a, a community, let's, I'm going to toss out Huxley, and I'm just going to use them as an example for people that might be watching. Let's say Huxley has determined that they need to replace some water lines in one of their oldest sections of town. They could target a neighborhood and do an LMI survey on that neighborhood. And, and chances are, they're going to be just fine with the 51% threshold. So I've worked over 25 years in communities that would never, ever quote, quote, see themselves meeting the LMI qualifications that I believe would be able, with targeted efforts, be able to use these programs. And so I'm sorry I wasn't at the, the SCDC, you know, again, it's, having been in, in other areas of the state where we have to, we had to really rely on these programs, you know, I became pretty familiar with them. So you just, you know, you target areas and, and you try to match it because the, the amounts aren't going to complete a whole city project. But you pair that with the fact that, that with a little bit of match, instead of a prescribed match, it could be a nice opportunity. You know, there's daycare assistance. So we have daycares that are, are looking to expand in other areas outside of Ames. And again, you can, in a nonprofit instance, is you can ask for up to $100,000 to support that daycare expansion. Or if it's a private daycare, then you just look again at their employees. And so we know unfortunately what daycare providers make. Chances are those employees in a for-profit daycare would probably meet the LMI threshold that needs to be passed in order to apply. So I, I think there, I think there are, there are going to be some uses for this. I have a feeling if we, we're not moving in that direction of getting applied by the 1st of October, you know, the $21 million for this opportunity will be gone because it's first come, you know, and if you meet the checkboxes, they'll, they'll fund it. So I think there'll be more coming. But, and I think this is the importance of us really working with our cities to say, what's, what's your highest priority for projects? Does this baby program work? Does that program work? And the other thing that, that's happening is just like trying to buy supply and demand. We also, I think, need to be able to have a list of grant writers and about what they charge so that our clerks and our elected officials are equipped to know who are the resources available to be able to, to write these. So either an EDA or a CDVG, I kind of, you know, I kind of think of myself as a pretty good grant writer, but those, those two particular are, are out of my league in terms of writing because there's specific things around procurement and tracking on the backside. But I think that's another one of the resources that we need to have ready. And we've already started to do that just because some of the communities we work with, I've been talking to, to Nevada, I had a conversation with Huxley yesterday. Mark, Mark does a great job up in Story City, so he's probably even a little further than, than, than I am on, on, on thinking about this. So is that what you were looking for, Lisa, in terms of some kind of discussion around the CDVG?
That is, thanks Brenda, I think that just gives us a better understanding because I, at least I took it away from how it was presented at this, the Economic Development Meeting. Maybe it was just me that particular day, that there was some confusion. Because I thought some of the clerks made a comment that, well, we don't qualify because we don't meet the low to moderate income threshold.
And then there was a thought, well, if you don't qualify, we definitely don't qualify.
Right, right, right. Yeah, and sometimes it's just how, I mean, it gets stuck on one person and then it just, you know, that's what they're just thinking on and stuff, so. So that was just another, another consideration as we were kind of looking at, is that something to say, well, have you applied for these funds or why not? And it might be, they have it because of the timeline of when, you know, any of that. So that was just another, another funding source to kind of throw in our mix of discussion.
Brenda, I do have a comment. And you, and I think it's because you talked about all the other funding that's available at the state level, not just the, the CDVG, the IEDA, the, and, well, depending infrastructure. But something came up in an ACO webinar that I sat in on the other day, and it was broadband, which the person who was doing the presenting didn't get too in a lot of specifics, but just stressed several times that we need to really coordinate with our states because the state has funding for broadband. And, and like I said, said that two or three times. I'm kind of at a loss of how to start that. I don't have any connections at the state. I thought about calling Dave Duncan, he's with the association that represents the, our providers, our telcos basically. But I'm wondering if just, if you have any contacts with the, at the OCIO?
So I happened to sit next to Levi Bappy at the HDC meeting yesterday. And, and you know, it, what is so frustrating about this broadband business is that map. And now if one person in the census tract has internet, then they're saying, they're deeming that that's not workable. And so, you know, that's kind of the gate to the state funding that was approved in the legislature. And don't, don't lose sight of in the CDVG special round of funding, broadband is an eligible use there too. And, and it has a little. And, and it has a little, some little different things about it. And, and, and you know, it deals with being able to put some broadband into public spaces. And how do you make broadband affordable to low to moderate income households? So my concern is Linda, when they talk about state funding being available, it's still getting back to that map, that group at the state level that put that map together. And that map doesn't really show that we have much for need in Story County, but yet every one of us knows somebody that can't get internet. So you know, we, we can dig into that a little further, but it was just the frustration I heard from Levi Bappy validated that. Just because I of course asked him what they were thinking, you know? But I can check a little further too. But I, I think there's some challenges and some unrealistic hoops at the state level.
And, and, and yeah, I know what you're talking about with that. And there's a challenge process to the OCIO's map. And everybody looked at it and it was like, well, we don't have time to challenge it and get a good challenge put together in advance of this round of funding. What I was trying to do was encourage our service providers to think about, you know, there is this kind of promise out there of another 100 million state funds in fiscal 23 and 100, another 24. So let's not give up on this challenge thing. Because we have some data out of our study that's being done that I think can be helpful in a challenge. We can also, individuals can also challenge. I've looked at the process because I, I certainly am eligible personally to do a challenge. Cause I don't get 25/3 all the time at home. But, but it's, it's a real, it's another real process. And I said, I don't have time to do this and one challenge isn't going to help. You know, at this point, but it, 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 that talks to a longer range strategy. But the other thing besides Levi's frustration, and I understand that, is how do we coordinate with the state? I hear this accordingly, we've got it, we locals need to coordinate with the state. I need to figure out how. You know, and I may talk with Duncan, I may talk with, I just do a cold call to the OCIO's office and say, you know, that, you know, NACO says we should coordinate with you. How are we doing that? If you, can you, if you hear with all your contacts of anybody else at the state level? And, and, and the problem is how do 99 counties do it? And maybe that gets, and Lisa, maybe that gets back to ISAC. Maybe, maybe if we figure out the how, ISAC is the what, because ISAC can represent all 99 counties. And we're not doing it one by one. So.
I was just going to say, so are you looking for, Linda, how locals can coordinate with the state particularly on broadband?
Yes, because we were in the NACO call the other day. We weren't, it was just like, it's essential that you cooperate with your state. Coordinate with your state because they have all this money too for broadband. And that's my question is how do we put together a coordinated plan for 99 counties with, with, and who, with whom in the state?
And I, I, I think it would be good though to expand it outside of broadband or in addition to broadband. Have answers to those questions like for school and childcare. There's a lot of state funding for childcare and, and like how do we, how do, how are we not double funding? How do, how are we coordinating that effort? I mean, I, I think you're absolutely right Linda. And I think there are a number of where that would be beneficial.
Certainly, because the schools have gotten money directly. And we could use some money for the schools if it fit into some purposes. Our purposes and what's the state doing? It's, yeah, it's, it's a huge, I mean, you need a huge flow chart on a huge wall someplace. But I, I'm just concerned, I guess I'm concerned that if we try to tackle everything, we won't get anything done that way.
And I think that was one of the reasons why I was going out to visit with the community is to try to find out what were they doing? One, so we didn't duplicate or if they were working on something that we could partner with or something. But again, so many, when I first started hadn't even thought of it yet. Now I think, I know they're having discussions now whether they, all of them have made their final determinations. I know one community, you know, has decided what they're going to do with their, with their dollars. So that's kind of where I was trying to go, but you're right. Then you got to figure out from the state, if you're looking at other sources, how do you pull all that in?
Yeah, I think it's, it's within our control, you know, within Story County. And I'm glad you're doing this, you know, to reach out, you know, to reach out to our agencies. You know, it's like you've been doing to reach out to the smaller communities, to reach out to the chamber. We've reached out to a whole lot of people. And they're all, we, we know who the actors are and, and we all work together anyway. But it's when we get into the state bureaucracy level and how do 99 counties possibly coordinate with the state OCIO, the state department of education, the state whoever? That's where it's going to be. And, and there's so many uses and so many agencies involved with this. It just kind of makes your mind, you know, start spinning. Maybe that's my problem today.
Well, and the frustrating thing, you know, I think on broadband is, you know, we keep hearing about all of the dollars going into broadband. And, and when we know we have spots, spots in our, in the rural areas that are not being served. Heck, we've got spots in Ames that aren't being served. You know, how can, you know, and, and where are these dollars going if they're not being, you know, if, if the kind of the gate is saying we're not eligible because, you know, all of our census tracts are served? You know, I, I do, I think that's a great question. Because I, I feel like it, it's a buzzword, people want to do something about it. But we're going to be sitting here, what if it's 2024, 2026 or lack grants 2023, those dollars aren't going to be spent because we, we've created a process that doesn't work.
And here's the problem. What everybody's hearing right now, the message they're hearing is all this money that's coming is going to give everybody fast, reliable broadband. That's an easy promise to make when you're in, you know, wherever appropriating the money. But then how do we make that happen locally? I mean, we've taken one small step right now and saying if, if our service provide, when our service providers are going for the OCIO money, we'll provide some, we'll letters of support and some match. You know, that's, and that was something ahead of deadlines. It was good we did that, but I'm sitting here thinking that's not going to meet, that's not going to get anywhere near that promise that's going to be in people's minds of, I'm going to, all this money is being spent on broadband, therefore I will have 100 upload, 100 download and it will be there all the time. No, that's, that getting there is going to be excruciating. And I need, we need help figuring out how.
And Latifah brings up another point, childcare and Sandra, I haven't forgotten about you on your survey. I think, I think United Way has results. But, but childcare is another one of those things that there's a lot of money flying around. But you know, what is the perfect project to get that? How do we add capacity at our existing providers? Yeah, it, so that's another perfect example. I figure out once we get broadband, you know, I think there's a lot of funding, it's just a matter of how do we match? You know, we have needs there too and so.
Yeah, my, my concern is this is all one-time funding, limited time funding.
Right.
And that just complicates it. I mean, even if we're able to get broadband to all of the households, if we get childcare to all the households that need it now in two years or three years, when there, the funding dries up, what happens? How do we make sure that those programs continue to exist? If that's what we end up funding or if not that, then what?
That's why infrastructure, the conventional infrastructure adding broadband is attractive. Not saying that's where all the money needs to go, but it's attractive because a lot of it's one-time costs. And you're right. It almost seems like some of the great, you know, what some people may consider the greater needs are ongoing needs.
And that's why too, when you're looking at water initiatives or sewer, that falls in that infrastructure arena. And that's why, like I said, when I'm talking with some of these communities who I know they have, you know, things that they need to address in those particular categories, they don't have the dollars necessarily to do that.
But you know, one, and one thing to think about with, with one-time things, a one-time solve some problem from municipality or a small unit of government can free up revenues in the future. You know, it's like, okay, we've got our wastewater taken care of now for the next 20 years. We don't have to worry about that. That means there's, there's other monies we might've had to tap in our budget that now we don't have to. And maybe those go to, can go to other needs. I mean, that's not perfect, but it's, it's something to think about. That, that, that getting big infrastructure, even medium infrastructure things taken care of now gives government flexibility to do other things on a longer term basis. So.
Well, and I was talking with Amelia yesterday. And we were talking about affordable housing and, and affordable housing development. And whether these funds would be appropriate and in what situations they would be appropriate. And that led us to talking about water and sewer infrastructure. And you know, I don't know if those are conversations we want to be having with communities. If, if, if these funds can help lay that groundwork, how do we work together on affordable housing there? Like if that's one of the big hurdles.
Well, and I think that's what the application would help come in. Cause then they can identify what it's for. You know, you can get in, you can make your application as specific or whatever. The one that I provided has like 20 different questions on there. We can, you know, go through and see is, are these the questions we really need to have? Do we need some different questions or whatever that to work at? But it would capture if they're wanting to do a housing division and they need, they've got some funds, but they need some additional funds to help with that, that water sewer infrastructure. That might be something they submit an application for. Or, or could we present it as we want, we would like more like realistically affordable housing and we'll, we can do this to support you in doing that.
I think however we want to tailor, that, that can be the things that we can talk about. If we want to do something like this, we can, that's like I said, we initially just put down what was in the total uses of those dollars. My total thought was we're not going to want to have all of that. Maybe we're going to want to list, hey, in general, so people know, but then say something, you know, have something to say, the county is going to do grant applications in these particular areas. So they're not thinking, well, gosh, we heard that you could do it for all of this, but we're only providing information on one area. Provide it the whole thing. But say these are the areas that the county will provide something.
And there's a really nice phrase that you see often in RFPs or announcements, preference will be given to, fill in the blank.
Right.
Think about that. I think if it's what you're saying, Latifah.
Yeah. And I think too, when you narrow the focus, it's where you get more, more focused, obviously applications. But then you're not setting yourself up to almost naming up another staff person because you've gotten 300 applications. You're looking at, you know, more manageable amount. And you could look at, okay, did we get enough at this particular time? Is this what we're wanting? Or are we seeing any that we want to expand? Do a second application under a different category topic? Other questions. Linda, I did look, so I'm looking back at the NACO presentation and it does say obligated by 2024 and extended, all, the cover funds must be spent and all work must be done by 2026. If I spoke out of turn one time, I'll own up to it, but I know I saw something.
Well, it was, in, in a previous document, it was 22 and 24. I agree with you.
Yeah, I know I had something else and that's where my brain start down. So I will follow up with Jamie just to make sure to say, hey, we know we've seen something else. So.
Thanks for looking that up.
So I, you know, I'll stress, you know, we're here, here to be helpful. You know, I love the thought of being able to leverage things and get big things done in our communities. And Leanne and I are meeting tomorrow, trying to, I think first and foremost, develop a plan to make sure our, our, our smallest of cities are getting their state stuff done in order to take that allocation. But let us, let me know what we can do to be helpful. And yeah, it's challenging is thinking about all of this. It's certainly an exciting time too. And it'd be great to be able to look back on this five, six years from now about a discussion that we had that made meaningful difference. I even think about, like you said, money not going somewhere. Keep in mind that big, big infrastructure improvements that have to be made, not only are they a drain on the city, but it increases their rates. And so oftentimes my water and sewer bill in Ames is cheaper than it might be if I lived in Searing. And so the other thing we're doing is really keeping, buying into that long-term affordability on those monthly bills too. And not smart enough to figure all that math equation out. But, but that, that's an investment that not only saves the money, it saves their citizens every month on their bills. So I'd love to be helpful and our team here would love to be helpful. So.
Right. So the board of health meeting yesterday, I'm going to put you on the spot Sandra. I talked to Sandra afterwards and she came out with a few questions about how we can continue supporting public health. I remember one of them, but I don't remember. I feel like there were three that you, ideas that you had Sandra. She did, you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I did email those to Lisa. I know one was about test kits, providing some funding to public health to assist them with purchasing test kits for schools. And then there were two other ones, but the, what? The issue that Lisa, huh?
Vaccine incentives, test kits and funding to assist public health and college folks who have tested positive.
Right. And the issue that you raised was that Les believes that she has some additional funding.
And I, and I said I would follow up with her, but when I spoke with Les White a few weeks ago about what she needed, they got some other unexpected money from the state.
Okay.
But they had money they had to expend as well. And I think she also said that the test kits were provided to her at no cost. So that's where she got them in the, in like 50 at a time is how, how it came. Yeah, I know that she said she hired some of those other nurses or whatever to help. So I will follow, follow up with her, but I don't know that she needs the other county money. Cause I believe she said she's got a good amount of money.
Okay. Okay. And one of the suggestions then was to possibly assist United Way with funding gift cards or the county could have something like that. Or do some type of other incentives to try and get people vaccinated.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know with United Way, are there, are there gift cards that there, are they vaccine gift cards that they're giving away? And are they giving them away only to folks that are not currently vaccinated?
I can contact Jeanne and get some details on that.
Cause I, I know Des Moines or Polk County with their incentives that they were doing was open to, you know, when they were doing the drawing for winning dollars was for anyone and stuff. And so I was just wondering, how are you increasing, potentially increasing the vaccine rate? You know, yes, I may do it because they would be then eligible. If you're targeting, it's only folks that haven't been vaccinated yet, would that drive the increase further? I, I don't know. I don't know the answer, but.
Right. I was thinking of it in terms of increasing the vaccine rate, trying to incentivize people who have not been. trying to incentivize people who have not been vaccinated to get vaccinated.
Other areas? Lisa, Mark, do you have any thoughts or input on anything?
I've got a couple of emails regarding the reporting that's due at the end of August and the interim rules and all that kind of stuff. But when you go to click on the link, there's nothing there yet, so I don't. Which it's going to be a fairly easy one to do this time because we won't expect any funds most likely, so.
Leanne, do you have any input that you want to turn at this time? I appreciate the work that you've done already.
Just taking things already done.
Modifying.
It's been simple so far.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just I haven't had the chance to look at some of those other states that you sent me links on. And, yeah, I just want to look at that and just see what other kind of things are out there as well. And again, I sent some questions off to Dubuque and just haven't. We'll wait to get those responses back. That just may help with this as we're potentially looking at this application process as well.
If there is any additional information we need on the website, I can start building stuff out there and then publish when we need to.
The survey results from what's out there? Are you going to gather those at some, or how are you going to?
It closes on 13.
Oh, OK.
So hopefully on the 16 or shortly thereafter, I can go in and start compiling them.
OK.
And present them. It may not be ready for, if there's a work session that week. But hopefully at least by the following.
Sure. Great. I did just get some information from a good neighbor. And she said they were able to help 19 households with rent and utilities last week, and their usual is eight to 11. Great. I'm excited that folks are naming these. So simply glad that we have some first resources there for them to get there. Yeah. Is there anything else for discussion today, next steps? As I said, I will bring some of this back next week. I will follow up with ISAC, and I can also follow up with Les so I can have that information for us at our next meeting. Sandra, do you want to get that information from United Way? And I wonder if United Way, if 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 they saw it. That'd be great because I can talk, when I talk with Les, too, I can ask her if she's aware that United Way is doing this and if they're doing anything to partner with United Way. I'll just make that as part of my conversation with Les as well.
OK.
Great. Is there anything specific you want me to work on or to do?
I think one is, I'm not sure what I say right now. I mean, I think we're, one thing we're really going to want to follow closely is that the dollars that have been been allocated.
OK, there are lots of lots of places I can stick my hands in, but I didn't know if there was some place in particular that you want to focus on. So, OK, sounds good. Supervisor Merkin, thoughts?
Um, no other ones, except you are going to follow up with ISAC specifically on broadband as well as how we coordinate with the state on some of the other.
Yep, I got that.
Some money, OK. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, then for our next meeting, do we want to go back to Tuesdays and meet next Tuesday, the 10th? And do that at what, 2:00?
Yes.
Right, we plan for our next meeting to be Tuesday, the 10th. We might have, I mean, with the information that we bring back and might help us to say, OK, there are other areas we want to delve into, looking into. Yep. Anything else for today? Have not seen that. All right, all right, then we will adjourn and have our next work session next Tuesday at the 10th at 2:00. All right, bye bye.